All right, at six o'clock, we'll call our meeting order, protect everybody from the council and by saying we just want to do our action.
Father, first and foremost, thank you all for life, health, and strength. Father, we're looking at how they see you, where you carry us and protect us, we appreciate your mercy. Father, we thank you all for this year, thank you for this career. This is our own section, we continue on to God forward, and we look forward for a new year, a new beginning, new vision, new ideas, to let us put all our powers, mind, together in one page, and we make it forth all kind of better kind. Father, these are all of these as your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, that was, uh, first we have approval of general items. Through the need for agenda today. And we have a question, approval agenda. How's it going? Mr. Woods, all the favors right here. Right now. Up next, we have our public hearings. And, um, the public hearing, uh, seven forty-nine, the orders for private, local franchise agreement collection of disposable household solid waste, uh, according to order, Mr. Haines, will I speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, this is a, uh, required public hearing, just before the second reading of the ordinance to, uh, to renew the franchise agreement for the collection of, uh, and disposal of household solid waste with USA Waste. It's the same guidelines and same wording actually as, as before, it'll be a continuation of the existing contract.
You can call this from council. Okay. All right. Close that public hearing. Uh, up next, we have another public hearing, order number seven fifty, or the ordinance to amend the agreement for the government of a multi-county industrial business park by and between Dalton County and Marwood County, South Carolina, providing for the government of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park, so as to include additional property in Dalton County as part of the joint county industrial park, other matters. Mr. Haines?
Again, this is a required public hearing for prior to the second, uh, reading of this ordinance, it's an affirmation of the property boundaries which, uh, of an existing, existing joint industrial park is located in Dalton County. We do get, by virtue of the original ordinance that allowed us to do this, um, to do these kinds of agreements, we do get, uh, one percent, I think, is of the, uh, of the taxes paid to, uh, to Dalton County, from the industrial park.
Thank you, Mr. Haines. You think council or, um, public? All right. Close that public hearing, or order number seven fifty, or open another public hearing, or order seven fifty-one, is a order to amend the certain joint county industrial business park agreement entered into between Marwood County, South Carolina, and Dillon County, South Carolina, dated as of March the eighth, twenty sixteen, so as to expand the boundaries of the park, including certain properties located within Dillon County and the other matters related to it. Mr. Haines?
Mr. Chairman, again, uh, the required public hearing for the second reading of this particular ordinance, this or, this ordinance is between Dillon and Marwood County, it is a joint industrial park, again, it is expanded on the park, and it's operating under the same, uh, regulation and wording as the original ordinance, which does give Marwood County one percent of tax.
All right. Thank you. The public? All right. Close that public hearing, or keep on going. Uh, up next, we have presentation, uh, three A, Shane Hancock and, uh, Robert Allen, who can handle the fourth, ending this year, June thirty, twenty sixteen, Chris Hayes.
Uh, Mr. Shader, remember the pencil? We have, um, Mark Wood and Shane Kirkley here, and we're two of our orders from Shane and Hancock, by one, and, um, Mark is going to present our fiscal year sixteen audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of council, hope everybody's doing well tonight.
Doing good. We're gonna make this, uh, short and sweet, and not go over with a bunch of facts and figures, if y'all wanna hear these talks, and pretty good other things to do tonight. Uh, everybody should have this one page exactly in front of them, and this is what I'm gonna go through, it's a lot, I think this is a lot easier to go through than having you guys look through a bunch of pages in the art report, okay? Um, when I get done, if there's any questions, I think we're gonna have to to answer any questions anybody has. Before I get started, uh, our overall hearing received is unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest opinion we can give on a set of financial statements included in our report, so congratulations for that. All right, let's, let's start. Uh, number one, just kinda usual outline of the art report, so all I've done is basically just summarize this eight page out in front of you. Uh, there's a management discussion, analysis, uh, basic financial statements, your notes, supplemental schedules, and then compliance, okay? Your, uh, different types of funds you have, uh, most of your funds are all governmental funds, so you've got your general fund, which is your main operating fund, you have various special revenue funds, you have a debt service fund and a capital projects fund, and you also have what we call fiduciary funds, uh, and that's funds that you're holding for, for other municipalities, so you have an agency fund, you have trust funds. All right, we're just gonna focus on the general fund, I think that's mainly what, uh, you know, the county's mainly concerned with, so number three, your fund statements, your total assets for the general fund were about six point eight million dollars, your total liabilities and deferred inflows were about one point three, so your fund balance is almost five point six million dollars, so let's see how your fund balance breaks down. You have restricted, and restricted is for debt service, capital projects, various other things, they're restricted by an outside party, so that's a little over a million dollars, so your unassigned fund balance or your unrestricted fund balance is about four point five, almost four point six million dollars, okay? Total revenues for the general fund were ten point four, expenditures were almost eleven point five, and then you had transfers and other financing sources of almost nine hundred thousand, so you had a little bit of negative change in fund balance in the general fund of about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, okay? Now, number seven, you've got, this is, uh, looking at your budget, so your revenues exceeded your budget by thirty-seven thousand, good thing was your expenditures were under budgeted by over five hundred thousand, your transfers and other financing sources were under which you budgeted about seven hundred thousand. Um, there are some findings in the art report this year, um, I'm not gonna get into those right now, those are, they're pretty self-explanatory, you can read them, uh, we've gone over all the findings, uh, with management, and, uh, one thing I did wanna mention, they asked me to mention, deals with the recreation accounts, we have various recreation accounts, and several of them are in the, uh, county's EIN number, those have now been included in your art report this year, so we gotta make sure that that activity gets recorded on these general ledger's books going forward, now, if that's something that needs to change, we need to make sure that those accounts get put in a different EIN number, but as long as they're in the county's EIN number, we've gotta make sure we get that activity so we can get retained and it gets included in the financial statements. It has been done this year, uh, we, we sent out information and we wrote a good back bank statements, and so we've included those this year, so that's gonna be something different that you're gonna see. Um, I would like to thank Ainsley and Kay, uh, Mr. Haines, all the staff, all the department heads, this is our first year of audit, and, uh, we put these guys through the wringer for about two weeks, and we asked a lot of questions, and, uh, we pulled a lot of information, uh, we weren't, didn't meet any hesitation, didn't meet anybody that said, uh, we didn't give you that, um, the staff worked very hard to get us what we needed, and it was a tremendous help to us to get done, I think this is probably early, so y'all forgotten this report, um, so, uh, that was, you know, that was one thing we, you know, that we stipulated in our contract, that we, we would give this, you know, to y'all before the end of the year, and, uh, we delivered, so hopefully, uh, hopefully that's a good thing. I'll open it up, any questions, I know y'all just got the report, so you probably don't have any questions, um, if y'all do, Ainsley knows how to get in touch with either myself or Shane, uh, you're more than welcome to call us or send us an email, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can, so if that, I'll, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I do have a question, he mentions, uh, findings, uh, mentioning one about the recreation account, so there are other findings that we need for ourselves, are there in particular section of the?
They are starting, the findings were starting page seventy-three.
You think else can do that together, Mike? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank y'all, thank you very much.
Up next, uh, it's pretty big, Amy Porter, Mayor, right, everybody can talk about the presentation, but?
Thank you, Chairman, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, uh, and I'm gonna have the library, it'll be real brief, and give you an overview of our annual report to the State Library of South Carolina. These are statistics, I've, you know, kinda written out, so they're in layman's terms, uh, but we, this year, have given out, or issued and maintained, eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-four library cards, uh, that's about thirty-nine point eighty-four percent of our population that is using our library, um, so I think that's a big thing, and we should be very proud of that, uh, and that is, uh, using those two thousand ten census numbers, that's right, I get the change. Uh, computer usage in twenty sixteen, we have about eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six computer stations, that's about forty-four percent of our people that come to our library that are using our computers. Uh, wireless sessions, two thousand one hundred and eighteen, uh, two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight people use our Wi-Fi, this year, we actually have technology in place that will give us an active enrollment, that, over two thousand was counted mostly by hand, the old-fashioned way, so, uh, we're actually seeing a trend of about seventy-nine hundred off of our machine that are recording for us now, per month, so that number will be significantly higher next year, um, so we're happy that, and that's actually a requirement of our state library, that that number is right, which is why we have the technology now to do that. Physical visits, we had about, well, exactly forty-one thousand eight hundred and nineteen people walk through our library this year, uh, last year, we only had thirty-one thousand ninety-eight, so we're up about thirty-four percent this year, and I think that's wonderful, that says a lot about what we're doing at the library, people are wanting to come in and wanting to use our service. Uh, our circulation's also up again, uh, and I, I, when I started at the library, I trended our circulation, we were on weak crease, and I don't know what happened, uh, for three or four years before I got there, but we've been on a trend upward for the past two years, I can say, uh, and some of the things, I'll skip a little bit, and then we'll, uh, come back up, but some of the things that we're doing to increase our circulation, we, we did our collection, now that is something that happened overnight, that took a year to do, we had about, I think, sixty thousand volumes in the library, so we went through, weeded, got things off the floor of the library, uh, we had some elderly patrons that requested that, so we picked all of our fiction up, which in turn allows our customers to see that too, so, uh, we weeded, uh, we shifted some things around, we've added some things to our collection, uh, like audio revision materials, uh, we added some standing order plans to kinda fill gaps, and getting top titles for things like audio books, uh, we're doing a more cut, customer-driven approach, talking to our people, saying, what do you need, what do you want at the library? Um, we posted signings, we made displays, and these are all the types of things we're doing to kinda restore circulation, help people find the things that they want, and we're also partnering now, and we have partnership before with the federal prison, and it got to the point where I lost a lot of money, and we had to kinda cut out services, but I met with the education specialists this year, we renewed that agreement, and, uh, they're circulating about a hundred books a month, so we're serving our federal prison now. Um, outreach, you guys have given us the tools, we need to serve our community outside of our headquarters, so our outreach this year, we have served six thousand one hundred and ninety-seven people, now I think that is wonderful, um, actually you can get access to what we're doing on our library's website, we have a calendar of events, and that's live, so anything we're doing, you can see what date and where we are in community, uh, we're doing things with our summer reading program, and we do that every week, you guys know, uh, but we have a big kickoff event, a free kickoff in the schools, we go out, take something that's exciting and stimulating to our kids, and, uh, kinda get them excited about what we're doing, then we have a seven-week program, uh, and kids coming in also, we have fed every child for the past two years, and we're proud of that, uh, we're participating with churches, schools, um, just about anybody that wants the library to be involved in our capacity, we've done it, um, so we're doing a lot of early literacy, young adult literacy, and adult literacy, we have computer classes at the library, and all these things are listed for you guys, um, community programs, we're doing, uh, any, this year, we actually had a symposium at the library, and that was this past Saturday, we had excellent turnout, uh, y'all, the piano we moved from Murchison, we actually used, and we had two local pianists come in, play Christmas carols, and we had about a hundred and seventy people participating, so we had Christmas this year, we lit up a lot of kids faces, uh, we did, uh, we're doing all the Halloween events around town, and we also did the Easter bunny, and I thought that was wonderful this year, uh, we did a story time with First Night Adventist, and , uh, that Thomas More participated with us in that, uh, did a story and did a big Easter one, so we're trying to do things like that for kids in the community, work on the head start, uh, give them a set of books, uh, when they graduate, and do a story time, so, uh, these are, this is just a little recap of what we've done in two thousand sixteen, and I'll give you the floor for questions.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I would ask, you got a question?
I guess, um, how should we, I knew with the ten, I know, they computers, two years old is that antique, how should we, uh, have y'all put the new computer already?
Yes, sir, uh, so one of the things we're doing with our daycares and our local head start centers, we're taking technology in, so we have tablets, we have, uh, smart readers, lead pads, all these things, and, uh, we're taking those in and giving them tech, basically, they know what to do with this stuff, all of it, they're teaching us a lot of things, but we're, you know, we're taking those things in, they're all preloaded with literacy, early literacy games, and, uh, they get about an hour with, so they're learning more than you.
And I do have a comment, excellent report, uh, this time we'll wait, keep it in and continue to let this sit, so, uh, Mr. Jimmy, you did your internship, so you will complete your own, on-time bureau, so I'm really proud of you, and what the staff has done, the concern that I wanna share with everybody, and I've been reading your reports, is we're still struggling to get a shelter for that very nice, very expensive van, uh, the skin that you call it is, is very sensitive to UV light, and the elements, you might get freezing rain, sleet, whatever, and I did see in your report that the original company reached out to the architects that did the design for the building, they did no longer provide any type of design for the, uh, the van, and the city is saying it has to look appropriate because it's in the city, and is it the Starlight Society that has to approve it?
We're in a historical district, of course, downtown, um, and one of the things that the city has told us is that they don't wanna see that building in that beautiful district, also they don't wanna see that building up, right up next to multimillion dollar facility, uh, it's just architecturally inappropriate, um, and so they want us to see, they asked me to go speak with the folks who designed our facility, and I did that, and they're not able to, uh, take on any of the work at this time, so, uh, that's kinda where we're at with plans for, um, that building, but something does need to be done because it is wrapped, uh, that wrap was expensive, and we do have pecan trees around our building, and the sack is not, uh, very nice to, for a wrap.
Mr. President, Chairman, and viewer that I like, um, for Mr. Haines before, well, Mr. Muller, and Mr. Haines, not gonna add anything to your plate this lady, but if, if there's something that can be done, some discussions, and see what type of aid or assistance, not necessarily money, but in finding an appropriate type shelter, uh, as soon as possible, but I'm concerned about the, the sleet and the snow and the ice and the sack, whatever, um, so maybe, um, we can lend some assistance with that, I understand the city's concerns still, we gotta take care of this, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, and, and, we're talking this day, that's one of the things that we kinda discuss, so, uh, Mr. Muller was quite aware, I mean, he, he knows that's one of the paths he's gonna have to look at whenever it comes on, you know, what I wanna say is, you know, we don't, we don't offer a whole lot to our citizens, but, uh, what we're offering, uh, what I would, I mean, we're offering a top-notch thing, you know, we're not just halfway through our library, I mean, it's, well, above and beyond, you know, we wanna thank you, and, uh, that's something our citizens, uh, can be proud of, you know, we have a nice library, but the numbers you give me are eleven thousand, uh, eighteen thousand, I mean, a hand count of twenty-one, hundred fifty, so we don't doubt, so it's been a lot to keep up with, but we wanna thank you, you know, that only way to tell whether we can improve is whenever we got some data, and then we'll get for it, so we'll, we'll thank you for that, and, uh, keep up, good work, you know, so we'll be looking into, uh, as Dr. Prince requested, that, you know, a shelter for, uh, for, for, so we wanna, uh, protect the things that we do now.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gotta move along in a hurry, uh, next, approval of minutes from number fifteen, twenty sixteen.
And I did bring, um, my resume, um, I knew that we accepted the minutes as quick here.
All right, Dr. Prince, we've got a second, which, all the favors right here, all right, these are matters. All right, whole business, uh, ordinance from seven forty-eight, says the orders authorized of resort, entitled to, chapter forty-four, of the code of laws, South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended for the execution and delivery of a fee loop, a bad value of taxes agreement between Marwood County and a company known as the customers, County, as Project Custom, to develop forty million for that valid tax incentives, and special source revenue credit, execution and delivery of property transfer agreement, for the transfer of property located in Marwood County Industrial Park, provided custom, inclusion of the project as a multi-county industrial park, the approval of certain sponsors, affiliates, and other group, related matters due to this, the second reading, Mr. Haines?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we had the first reading of this, uh, ordinance, uh, I think it was back in July, we stayed in contact with the, uh, with the principal of Project Custom, that's a high-end tissue paper, as you recall, who had some existing, or have a, uh, some ideas of developing a product using some of our, uh, our existing industries, uh, waste product, and, or some product from existing industries, and, uh, we, we weren't sure where it might be headed for a while, and, uh, we stayed in contact once a month or so, and then the, the other day, Vaughn and I had a conversation with the principal, and everything back on the go, and now we're in a hurry, as these things usually go, um, so right now, things are looking good, that we, we're gonna proceed with the second reading at, at their request, um, we'll have a public hearing, the third reading as early as the meeting in January, uh, we would expect some activity from the company, um, at that time, or in a shorter period of time there.
Are we talking about land, or are you building?
This is the one, this is the one that, uh, where we were giving, uh, twenty, roughly twenty-five acres of property out of the industrial park, and, and that was pretty much our commitment along with the, along with the fee loop, this, uh, this property, which we have, needed to them, we've had survey, survey that showed to them, in fact, part of the conversation the other day, is they have requested additional five acres of property, they've, uh, I think, financing and, and, maybe some of the folks in the, in the corporations had, uh, suggested that, that they add an energy component, a, a solar energy component to their, to their process, and they've agreed to try to do that, and they need space for the, the solar panels, it sounded like something we could do, we haven't had anything worked on that particular request yet, but we gave them every indication that we would pursue that, at least in terms of trying to see if it is possible to do, but it's a fairly, seems to be right now, it's a fairly good deal on part of the county for what we would get, remember, this is a fifty million dollar investment, uh, but I think it was a hundred and fifty-five thousand, if that counts, and, and, and actually, the number is hinted to have grown, we're, we're not counting any of the new numbers we're hearing, I'm just telling you, it would be original numbers, um, from the very first, from the very first conversations, this project seems to be getting bigger as it gets, so it's one of those things that looks like it's gonna happen, at least at this point.
So we'll get more details upon?
Sorry, I can't be more positive, but it does seem positive, but you never know how these things can go.
So we'll get more details about the second D?
Yes, we have to tell, we'll tell, often we tell.
Yeah, the intent just to get you right there, so if we can have a little meeting going.
And you can have the whole thing.
They don't wanna be waiting, do they, obviously, stop us, or?
Yeah, thank you.
With that, any more questions?
I approve that we approve third reading for our ordinance, seven forty-nine, second reading, that's a third and second reading, is that right?
Second motion. Motion, second, this is what, I'll play a raise right here, right here, and, all right, order seven forty-nine, says the ordinance provides for the renewal of the franchise agreement with the collection and disposal of household solid waste, second reading, Mr. Haines, please.
This will be the second reading of, as required, of the three that would be required to, uh, renew the franchise agreement for the collection and disposal of household waste with, uh, USA Waste.
I think we have, we have, number seven forty-nine, Woods, this is point three six, all the favors right here, all right, these are matters. Third, order seven fifty, the ordinance to amend the agreement for development of a multi-county industrial business park, by and between Dalton County and Marwood County, by and for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park, including additional property in Dalton County and the joint county industrial park, other matters related to, Mr. Haines?
Mr. Chairman, as we discussed minutes ago, the, uh, this is the second reading of the expansion of an industrial park with, uh, Dalton County, it's followed by the same group of regulations, basically, a reasonable agreement with Dalton County, yes, it's an expansion of the existing, uh, park, and therefore agreement that we have with that county.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Haines, motion, to the public, right, your second?
Second.
President, all the favors right here, all right, these are matters. Third, order seven fifty, the order, the order to amend the certain county industrial business park agreement entered into between Marwood County and Dillon County, dated March eighth, twenty sixteen, to expand the bounds of the park, including certain property located in Dillon County.
Mr. Haines? Mr. Chairman, as we discussed earlier, this, this is the industrial business park that we, uh, in, in Dillon County, in which we participate, it's, uh, also expanding to allow for a, a new business to come into that particular park, it's, uh, second reading as required, of the three that will be required, the four, the four ordinance will be approved, and it's requested to do through the second reading.
All right. Got a motion? Mr. Land?
Myself.
Mr. Woods, all the favors right here, all right, these are matters. Uh, next, uh, new business, uh, resolution twelve sixteen, and order resolution, approval of tax advantage, bond compliance, policies, procedures for Marwood County, South Carolina, and other matters related to, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is actually, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is actually a, a set of procedures that, that we were, that we had helped in putting together. As you recall, we refinanced the bond recently and, and saved some money. One of the requirements for that refinancing was to have written policies as to how we would provide the funding, and how we handled the funding, and how we would handle the business of paying back the bond, and, and other affiliated things that we just handled internally. Even though without, as I read, most, most of the activities we actually do, we just didn't have written policy. But with the help of the consultants who helped us refinance that bond, we put together this, this written policy. It is required, and in fact, we've already said that we have the policies. Now we've put them in place at this time, makes it, it makes it a hundred percent official. And it's recommended and suggested that the resolution should approve.
Your recommendation, we have a motion. So, Mr. Woods. This is point two-second. All the other reason right here. All right, these are members. Uh, next, right, the resolution twelve sixteen oh-two, resolution approving the mutual aid agreement between the state of South Carolina and Marlboro County.
Mr. Chairman, it seems that government's good for, for doing these kinds of things. After every, after every disaster or every emergency that we have, we try to evaluate if things didn't go quite so smoothly, and, and try to come up with plans for how we might fix that, or how we make things, make things at least try to go a little, a little smoother the next time the state can happen. As a result of Hurricane Matthew, statewide, we've been, it's been suggested that we consider a statewide mutual aid agreement. And, and this just, again, puts in variety a lot of things that fire departments, rescue squads, ambulance services, county governments across the state, we're doing. Sometimes we had agreements with one another, sometimes there was an agreement in place between us and, say, the state DOT. Some places, we found that there wasn't an agreement in our case for certain things. Now, the, the help, the assistance, still has to be requested by the agency that's affected. In other words, if we're in an emergency situation, we still have to request the help. You're not just going to get covered up with agencies flying in here, including state agencies, to assist us and take over what we're trying to do. You still make requests, and there's a chance we're not making those requests. Again, a resolution suggested, it recommended that we consider, uh, that it'll help solve some of the problems for the next time the emergency management directors work together and put this together. If it's fire departments, he fuses others within our department, and of course, the folks across the state in their same position. So it seems to be a way to solve some of the problems, but as you know, it's an emergency. It's a, it's something different that we normally experience, so there'll be things that we didn't think of. But again, it'll give us hopefully a leg up on, on what we did last time.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion to approve that resolution? Mr. Land. You have a second? All the other reason right here. All the Asian members. Uh, next, resolution twelve sixteen oh-three, resolution authorizing submission of application by Marlboro County for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, NISA economic government grant funds of over twenty-five thousand, and operation is set right in the morning. Mr. Haynes.
Mr. Chairman, this is, you've heard us talk about it, the, the grant program with the Northeastern Community Alliance, or Northeastern Community Alliance, NISA, where we send them, and, and we're usually internally saying, we send them twenty-five thousand dollars, and they send us fifty thousand dollars back. And it's a, it's a grant program, it's one of those unbelievable grant programs, but it actually, it actually does work pretty much that way. We do tell them ahead of time that we're going to do certain things. We've, we've said we want to replace some signs in some of our industrial sites, and in Ring and County. We did get all those done some time back, and, and some, some other things. Ron's been involved in putting together the plan. We were given an extension for making an application, but we're, we need to get this in front of council and get your authorization to, uh, make that, make that transfer, and we'll get back fifty thousand dollars to spend on the projects that we go over and spend on.
Can we find that four already written from there? All right, Mr. Chairman, with that, we have a motion to approve that resolution. Mr. Woods. This is point two-second. All the other reason right here. All right, these are members. Uh, on resolution twelve sixteen oh-four, resolution identifying the project to satisfy the requirements of title of chapter forty-four of the South Carolina Code, so that allow investment expenditures incurred by company owners to the county's Project Custom, its affiliates, and related entities to qualify as expenditures eligible for the fee and the tax arrangements with Marlboro County South Carolina, providing for the later economic development intended to include special source revenue credits and transfer real property on by the county, and other matters made there, Mr. Haynes.
Mr. Chairman, council, what we're doing with this resolution is getting your permission to actually do the negotiations with the council. Anything that, any deals made, any, uh, any property that gets transferred would come before council and get authorization. This is, this is just our official authorization to do the negotiations and bring the package back to council for approval.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve this resolution. Second. We'll take all the other right here. All right, Mr. Chairman, moving on along. Uh, next, we have a, a certificate of appreciation, you know, we will hand out. And Mr. Kito, if you could come up. All right. There's one that says, says Marlboro County Council hereby presents a certificate of appreciation, Mr. Kito of USA Waste and Recycling, who is businesses J Davis Enterprises Incorporated, for his contributions to Marlboro County with the sixth annual holiday turkey giveaway. Whereas Kito of USA Waste and Recycling, J Davis Enterprises Incorporated, has contributed monetary funds and much time assisting coordinate with the sixth annual holiday turkey giveaway, which was held November nineteenth, twenty sixteen. Whereas the citizens of Marlboro County appreciate some benefits from the generous acts, and many citizens with financial difficulties may not be in a position to purchase a turkey for their families during a special time of the year. Whereas Kito of USA Waste and Recycling Incorporated is diligent in making the sixth annual turkey giveaway a safe and successful event for the residents of Marlboro County. Whereas Marlboro County Council a lot expressed their appreciation to Kito of USA Waste and Recycling and J Davis Enterprises Incorporated, for his efforts in making the sixth annual turkey giveaway a safe and successful event for his companies' daily services to the citizens of Marlboro County. We just want to say thank you, buddy. Yes, sir. All right. What's your call? No, we're up here. Mr. Ken Allen. All right. A living man. A living man. All right. Read this in. Here it is, it's just a proclamation recognizing and honoring Mr. Ken Allen for his years of service and contributions to Marlboro County. Whereas Mr. Ken Allen has served county council members since December, not, December tenth, nineteen ninety-eight, and is the council chair for March twenty, two thousand four, to December two thousand five. And whereas Mr. Ken Allen has been an active and committed member of public service for the benefit of his community and for the extended period of time. And whereas Mr. Ken Allen has made many positive contributions to our county and showed tireless devotion for the quest of a better quality of life for the citizens of Marlboro County. Now, therefore, being hereby proclaiming that the members of the Marlboro County Council wish to recognize the tremendous commitment and numerous contributions Mr. Ken Allen has made to benefit the county and its citizens, and wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. So I want to say thank you, sir.
I'd like to, in this time, take time to thank the people from the sixth district who've voted and supported me. Whenever I called on them, they respond. And I thank them for that. And secondly, I have had this name about the county employees. When I came over here eighteen years ago, same as now, we had, we had good employees, and I was impressed by that. And you know, in those eighteen years, a lot of those folks have gone on. But somehow, and I don't know why either, we've been able to replace those folks with people. The county has a great bunch of beautiful workers on there. And with Mr. Tricia Munnell, our social leader, the email, our county employee family is more and closer together. We now know when one of those having problems or issues, and in the past, we didn't have that. But now, every time somebody's in need, or there's a situation, well, I just can't say enough about the employees that we have working with the county. Sometimes, we get busy with what we're doing, and we kind of forget about it. But with the social leader thing that Mr. Munnell is doing, and the emails, I think the family are more closer together. And when you got that kind of close-knit stuff, things always work better. And thirdly, about the council. You know, I, I think people sometime out here says, when everybody all is voting in unison, it's intense. This transformation occurred a few years back when Mr. Munnell and Mr. Haynes came on board. Y'all see us all voting in unison, but y'all see the arguments and things that go on. It used to be a whole lot worse than what it is now. Basically, the way it works now, and the reason you see so much getting along is when they bring us and provide us with the information we need on a decision, everybody gets to say what they want to say. And you pretty much know at that time where that issue stands. So it, you know, you can try to persuade somebody to change their mind if you like, but everybody pretty much know what it is. So when you see this transformation is as occurring, it's been a long time coming, but we never make it personal anymore, and it shouldn't be personal. It's just about the business. But, uh, don't you think just because we all raise our hands and go, it was good, it was good. And saying that, absolutely, thank you.
I gotta need some more of our reading, please. All right. Mr. Land. So, I can probably stop reading this one, it's up here now. You're gonna be reading my screen. So, uh, can we do that? Here it is, it's a proclamation recognizing and honoring Mr. James J. Jim Haynes for his years of public service and his contributions to Marlboro County. Whereas Marlboro County Council wishes to recognize, whenever possible, the contributions and extraordinary public service to our citizens. Whereas Jim Haynes was born in western North Carolina and graduated from the public school here. He attended Wake Forest University and Appalachian State University, earning a bachelor's degree in political science and master's degree in public administration. Whereas like his father before him, Jim chose a life of public service. He began his career with the city of Thomasville, North Carolina, first serving as a manager, management intern, then as clerk of the board, treasurer, and assistant to the city manager. In nineteen seventy-five, he was appointed as county manager in Yakima County, North Carolina, and served there until his appointment as Burke County North Carolina manager in nineteen eighty-two. In nineteen eighty-nine, he left government, county government, to serve as a general planning manager of Wasenean Bakeries in Valdez, North Carolina, a regional bakery of commercial bread, selling one of the brands of Suddine, Heritage, Boast, and others. Jim was appointed vice president of manufacturing as the company continued to grow under Rosson family ownership. Whereas in January nineteen ninety-six, Jim returned to the public sector and was appointed county manager from Richmond County, North Carolina, where he served until his retirement in two thousand nine. Thereafter, he served as interim county manager in Yakima County, North Carolina, and later as a consultant to the county manager in the same county. He also had another consortium assignment in North Carolina. Whereas in September two thousand twelve, Jim Haynes was asked to serve as interim county administrator for Marlboro County, and was later named county administrator of August twelfth, twenty fourteen. He has served Marlboro County in that capacity until December of twenty sixteen. Whereas throughout these many years of public service, Jim's hard work and dedication has resulted in the betterment of the lives of the citizens in each of the counties he has managed. His steadfast commitment to honest and open government has been a role model for integrity and professionalism for those in local government management. His work has led Marlboro County to better plus. Now, therefore, being hereby proclaiming that the members of the Marlboro County Council wish to recognize Mr. Jim Haynes for his life of public service and dedication to the county, to Marlboro County, and wish you much success and good fortune in your future endeavors. Thank you, sir. All right. He does take the word out.
This was written, it also served as my itinerary. It's kind of deep. I came here on one person's, I think one person's heavy-handed recommendations at the time, Mr. Munnell and that. We worked together for a few years in Richmond County, had some success in economic development, I believe. And, and it was to be a three-month stint, as I recall. And, uh, so, that, that's actually fairly tough to do, but, you know, to be of any value. And, and it turned into over four years of, of time and effort and a lot of fun. There's a lot of good folks here, as Councilman Allen said. It's, uh, there's a lot of good folks that work for the county, and a lot of good folks that come and go through, yeah, yes. I got the credit for things that I didn't do, a lot of credit for things that just took place while I was here, a lot of good love. But the, the employees, the folks who were on the ground, dealing with people, answering the phones, solving the problems, were the ones who should get the credit. I just try to give them the tools they need to operate when it's an opportunity that I have. And there's not that many of those, to counsel myself, try to make things available, and give folks enough of what they need to do. But anyway, it's appreciated, I appreciate the time, I've made a lot of new friends. And it's amazing, and I told the, the council that, that got me to come down as an interim this earlier, it's almost like there was a wall, a tight line. I knew very little about, about Marlboro County, as, as the next-door county north. We just, just didn't have any interaction, and I, I've learned a lot. There are some differences, obviously, in the way governments set up and operate. Not all necessarily bad, it's just different. Uh, it's been a long one, uh, appreciate it, thank you for the opportunity.
Up next, the board, uh, Board of Commissions, adjutant. Up next, uh, Ms. Engle, or what is it?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to give a call, uh, the number is thirty-four, forty percent of the budget of the mail home. It's a slight lower budget for this point in the fiscal year. There's only a slight increase in revenues for the ones that no longer earn, but, you know, tax collections should have a significant increase for next month, and just should bring a little bit of revenue to the house, smaller lines, budgeted expenses. Um, finance department processed the Christmas bonuses, and they were distributed with regular payroll on December second.
Uh, next, Mr. Haynes.
Another chance. Kate Linder, Kate, has come to two meetings since I've been here, I think. One when Cecil before me was leaving, so it was my first meeting, and then, now I'm leaving. So it turns out she, she shows up, somebody's about to. So be careful, Ron. Okay, you come to the meeting, it's over. As we always do, the following employees are recognized, uh, those who have five or more years of service to Marlboro County through the month of November. Uh, Chanice Covington, who has twelve years, Amanda Hill, eight years, Marie Hill, five years, Mary Good, ten years, and Ken McLean, eighteen years. Joshua Boone, the animal shelter director, has advised that for the month of November, a total of seventy-six dogs have been taken in, with seventy-one being rescued, and transferred into ownership in other locations. Four were adopted, usually that's locally, five being reclaimed by owner, and two being euthanized, leaving fifty-five at the shelter right now, or again in November. A total of six cats were taken in, with twenty-four being rescued, seven adopted, and six being euthanized, leaving eighty-two currently at the shelter. Again, we're making cats. We have a report from FEMA, uh, over the federal emergency management authority agency. Uh, they came in after Hurricane Matthew, they're telling us how many applications, I think the date was the deadline, uh, for making an assessment in most counties. Uh, we had four hundred and seventy-seven applications for, for assistance from FEMA. Three eighty, three hundred and eighty-one came from homeowners, and ninety-five from renters of property. Uh, total, total funds of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-three cents were actually authorized to be paid or paid. You have, as part of your attachment, a breakdown of, of the payout schedule. We, uh, have, going out, and it's, it's kind of one of those things, I'm, I'm closing up, the council had asked it sometime. the council had asked sometime back to at least be able to look at. The, we're taking bids for the destruction or demolition of the old library and the old animal shelter. Actually Sandy Watford with the PP Council of Government is engineering the process and had a meeting today with potential bidder. We actually have, there was a room full of folks, and we actually had ten or more packages of bid specs picked up by potential bidder. So that's good news for us, meaning there's some competition there. Now, Ron and I have been talking about the money, we're talking about using the last of the bond money for this. And there may be other projects the council wants to consider. There may be some roofing projects. You may do one of these, they'll be bid separately. You may do both of them, of course, if you decide that they're the highest priority. But I wanted to get this to you as part of, part of my finishing up some things that I had been assigned to do. Chairman Steen, Councilman Glad, and Ron Munn ended the statewide CTC meeting in Columbia. I think learned some engineering techniques for roads and whatnot, and had a good visit, at least on the way there back. We received a letter from South Carolina County's Workers Compensation Trust, and we're actually getting back a little bit of money. As you know, we're self-funded. We're getting back roughly four thousand dollars. In other words, we saved a little bit. We didn't quite, we didn't quite spend as much as we were anticipating to spend. The Grover handles that, it does a good job. The solicitor's office also received three hundred and seventy-five dollar refund from their agreement. The fifth annual, of course you guys all know this, but the fifth annual Employees' Christmas Dinner was held last week, I guess, or now, in Bloom, at the gym. I think things went well, we had plenty of room. It was warm, it was dry, and we had gifts. So it seemed that we had put on something good for the employees. It seemed to be appreciated. Everyone received a gift, Will received a gift that they haven't come to pick theirs up. We had travel bags for the employees. The Christmas parade was delayed from this afternoon, which was probably pretty good because of the rain. And it's been rescheduled for Saturday morning. Earlier today, we felt the weather report was for real cold temperatures. And now it seems like it might be like sixty degrees on Saturday. So some of you would be glad to be there or to ride the float. They actually have good luck with it. The Bloom Fire Department invited members of council to their annual Christmas party, which will be held Saturday, December seventeenth, at seven P.M. At the We Get Together Theater, located on Highway thirty-eight south in Bloom. AMI Kids have a holiday pop in on Wednesday, December twenty-first, from three to five. Their offices at six-twenty Marlboro Road in Van Nuys. And they request an RSVP and the numbers in their package there. National Association of Counties, two thousand seventeen, let's say conference, will be held in Washington, D.C., February twenty-fifth to March first. One of the things that, I think you'll find, as you begin to participate more and more in the national and state organizations, there's just a lot of things going on. You get to hear ideas from other places sometimes. Sometimes it just gives you an idea of how something might transfer to Marlboro County and how that you could want to do those things. You're here being in Chicago here, but you might hear something that would translate. And over the years, I've found it to be fun and actually informative most of the time. Something to consider as a council member and staff, to be able to go and participate in these programs. Again, I've enjoyed my time. I appreciate being given the opportunity, but I'll stand for questions one more time.
Everybody, anything for Mr. Haynes. No, I'm gonna do it for a break. Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Next, we have our recognition citizen, Christmas council. First, we have just one person, Mr. Kito. Good luck. You have three minutes at least from USA Live.
Mr. Chair, Kevin. I'd like to thank y'all for the calls that we gave with turkey giveaway. I don't have the exact number, but we gave close to five hundred turkeys away. And we're going to try instead of going for seven fifty next year. And we also partnered with McColl Police Department, gave away twenty. So we're handling different turkeys. And I was very humbled to see some of the people, how much they appreciate what we did for them. It's our sixth year doing it, and we hope to do it, continue as long as we're a sport, and we'll be there. I talked to some more today, she said we've been in business here since ninety-nine. And we currently have two trucks, five personnel. And I've always been the contact person over residential trash, but I am now. And I have lived in Montgomery, so many places, Facebook, everywhere else for people to contact me personally. And if any issues, I'll take care of them in a timely manner. And just living where we live, I run into people so many different places, you know, gas stations, Walmart, everywhere. So any issues that anyone has, can contact me. I'm pretty much everybody's got a phone number now. So I want to continue to give you the service. Any questions, I'm ready to take them on, but anybody in the public, anybody got any questions about it? So I'll thank y'all.
Next, we have recognition council members. Uh, struck Mr. Woods.
What happened? It's given a break here, uh, we told them two thousand and sixteen. But Alan, as you move on, we should, you must love. If I record it now, then everybody can leave the phone now. It's been a pleasure working with you, last name. As a young guy, you got a council, you sit back and you learn. And being, you know, the other statesman at that time, you know, we just started back, and I started like this. Yeah, true people, we do, we had a lot of that guy. We had our disagreement and that's been the whole council. But that's, we come forward, and we come from up, we go, not to say that we're on the same page. And that's what we try to do, and try to let everybody see that we work together hand in hand. We can get a lot to accomplish. Mr. Hanes, James? Mr. Hanes, it's been a true pleasure. I had to be able with two administrators, Cecil and yourself, and Ron. You got, you know, you got a good man far behind. And we were real bored, and we know, uh, the name for that thing, in good hands. We will support you, let me get him. And you council members, you come forward. We looking forward to what we offer. And I said, we get in total mood, and you gotta, everybody really okay to disagree. You know, so we looking forward for our bird and Charles to come aboard and be part of the team. And hopefully twenty seventeen will be awesome year for us.
That's not great.
Mr. Living.
Yes, sir.
We're good, we're good. Can't have a lot of folks in. We just forward what we offer. You know, I do have all I do, the whole spin. And you could come before share, so now you receive, we want to do another chat.
Okay.
That's right. That's right. You come forward, we hope you, you guys, be that team.
Really?
All right, what I would like to say is, Mr. Hanes, truly, you're gonna be missed. I knew we're gonna do one, but it's still not a particular place of saying that you're gonna be missed. And I knew you were gonna be missed. We've been through a lot of things, and y'all been here for us, you know? And Ken, I think, we've been out a long time. Long time. And we've never had a crossbow, never had a crossbow with each other about anything. And he just always, he taught me a lot of stuff, and you talk about things now. Sometime when I was in doubt, I called on Ken. And you know, I absolutely get me I want, and I'm truly gonna miss you. Really gonna miss you. You're gonna be kept up there, Mr. Hanes. I can't say enough for you because you brought us from a long way. You did a lot of stuff here for Marlboro County. You did a lot of things that really helped the county here. And especially starting that Christmas dinner that we have down there, that really was, I mean, that's something. And everybody enjoyed it, and we have enjoyed it. And you truly gonna be missed. And we appreciate everything you have done. The concert future that you gave Marlboro County is just phenomenal. And we really gonna miss you. All right, I think that's all right.
Nah, I'm gonna be pushing. The thing I said off. And one day I was at September's camp for four years. And Mia just talked back and forth as things was going on. And he had a lot of knowledge, and he talked me out of things. And I appreciate that. I enjoy sitting next to him for his things, what's ever for him. Mr. Hanes was, you know, I really ain't got nothing to say about him. I mean, he's just great, so I just have to be like that, and just like, really, real. Look back at the past year, one of the things that been taking place, and he, I'm wrecking my brain trying to figure out how to put this here together, because there's just so many things. I mean, animal shelter, veterans affair, I mean, just, let's just go on and on and on. Things that we've been doing that we hadn't been doing before. We've just been great. So I came out to a thing saying, let me talk to Mr. Munn, and Jason's been thinking about this here. And we decided that what we wanted to do instead of doing today, is pretty much drop this here on, Mr. Munn over there with next month. We're gonna put a package together for all the things that we looked at for the past year. There's just so much that you can't explain in four or five minutes, right? So we really want to put something together that's really gonna be nice. And Ron's gonna handle that. So our meeting in January is gonna be a real special meeting, and we're gonna have some good things going, and we're gonna hit everybody, like the library, and a whole lot of different things that people have done. So I'm also leaving this alone for the night. No, no, I'm putting this short. And down to Frank Martin, just a bunch of things. But I'm good. And welcome y'all guys into mine, I mean, really, this is gonna be good on you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for guys giving some time. I have some things that I want to share. Pretty much it's been said about Ken, he's had a part from each other from two thousand on when I came on board. It's been interesting, it's been a wonderful journey. And thank you so much for your leadership and guidance and conversations. And to you, Mr. Hanes, boy or boy, I love you six years. And you finally came here, and you really turned things around. And for that, I'm really grateful. Everybody said everything, I won't add to that. I do want to make a couple of announcements. I want to thank the county staff for how they renovated the Wade H. Prince Recreation Center. Everybody was so delighted, it's beautiful, it's bright, it's inviting. And I'm sure it's gonna be heavily used in the days to come, especially now that we have the air conditioning. For those of you that don't know, Mia McLeod, a baby of Bennettsville, daughter Jimmy McLeod, owner of Mars Home, was sworn in as the third female ever for the South Carolina Senate on November twenty-ninth in Columbia. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that ceremony certainly moving. And she made history, and we're not in her district, or she is out home there, or she's gonna make us proud. Mr. Lemon?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, on your behalf, is swearing in, will be this Sunday coming at three o'clock at Rovia Center. All are invited.
Yes, ma'am.
We like the location, perfect for you and the venue and the job that you have coming forward. And we have our support, and we really appreciate how you have always come to our meetings and shared information and represented Sheriff's Department. There's been, I want to give you an update on a nonprofit called Our Children, Their Future. For this year, we raised nearly forty-six thousand dollars. We provided thirty-five thousand weekend meals to children, which is only a fraction of the need in accounting. But it's wonderful the way the community is rallying around this effort. And it's never too late to make a tactical contribution if you so desire. I'd like to announce that there's a group down West Bennettsville, Ms. Plato, Ms. Bernice Johnson, and myself, and Tyler Abraham. And we've had a different events in the community with children, and we having a winter fest. After Christmas, after Santa Claus, or before going back to school, there'll be more announcements in the paper. But I'd just like for the community to know that there are groups in the area that are doing things for children that can't get to plan or device or the other parts. It's been an interesting year, looking forward to two thousand seventeen for all of those events. Thank you, council members, it's been wonderful. We're gonna miss you.
I just want to hang it over, thank you. I've already been saying, ready for Jim. It's been good working with you, and I do this year. Jim, same goes to you. I just want, I love to be ready to go to work first of the year and do as good as we have done. We've done some good things to that for you, too. I'm proud of you, you know, so with that, Merry Christmas to everybody.
Chairman Steen, I'm gonna, I'd like to defer my time to Mr. Black, too.
I'm good. Yo, fuck, I'm going to walk for a while, I'm getting there. But I'm going home on the next one.
We do thank everybody for everything they've done. And this is my last, I guess, meeting, it's chairman for twenty sixteen, this is our last meeting. So you know, it's been interesting, learned a lot as a chairman. And you know, it's, just being chairman, there's nothing, it's all of us up here that does everything. You know, it's a team effort, you know, that's the way it should be. And you know, that's the way we want it to be. You know, whoever's in chaircy, the vice chaircy, or even members of council, it should be, you know, for a citizen, a law, that's what we're here for. So we've had our team serve, so we thank you for that. As they said, you know, to Mr. Allen, you know, I guess I'm the newest one on the block, as I was saying. And so I watched him from out there, and you know, ended up here working with him. And just thank you, like I said, I've learned a lot as a citizen watching, or as a council member watching. I have done that. And then Mr. Hanes, we, you know, I can't say enough, everybody's said, we could go on and on and on. We do want to say thank you. It's Mr. Munn, he'll be coming on board in just a few weeks. Seemed like back, we were interviewing back and forth, it was a long time ago, but it was. I mean, but you know, time flies real quick, you know. And so I want to say welcome, and we look forward to working with you. On a different level now than we have in the past, we do want to show your support to the new council members. You know, we want to come on, and we've got a lot of work to do, but we want to say welcome and just hit the ground running and keep moving forward. And we've got a election new sheriff coming on board, so we want to thank Chief Lemon. There's a lot of vision and hope for twenty seventeen, you know. It's moving in the right trend, and we want to say, we want to continue to look forward in that direction. And a lot of things going on, the library, the recreation centers, and you know, just all the way across the border. You know, I know they think they're working on that. It's good to be home, I'm very sure. It is good to be here, you know, it's good to be able to be near your family at Christmas time. You know, we've lost a few along the way, you know, from our family. And we want to remember them during our Christmas holidays. So you know, everybody be out there, be safe. Keep, don't forget, the two rivers we send, you know, don't forget the meaning of Christmas. You know, we want to make sure any of our Christmas trees inside are sacred Jesus Christ. We want to make sure that we put that first and foremost. It's the first and foremost. I think they'll be proud of that. All right, that's it. All right. If nobody has anything else, just give motion to our host. All right.